Good evening, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Tuolton City Council for August 22nd. And we will begin our manner, our meeting in the customary manner of a flag salute, but we're privileged tonight to have a couple of young men from Troop 845 to lead us in the pledge. So, thank you for coming. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for coming down here and doing that, I appreciate that. It's always great to have scouts come down and lead the pledge. Under announcements, we have the 2016 Tuolton Community Survey.
We have just a quick announcement for you. The summer Tuolton is conducting a community survey. We're working with the National Research Center to do what's called the National Citizen Survey. Similar to one that we did back in 2013, it looks at community services, but this one is also expanded to look at community livability characteristics as well. Back at the end of July, 1,500 residents in Tuolton were mailed a paper copy of the survey. And we really encourage everyone to participate in that. For those residents that did not receive the paper copy, which was part of the statistically valid sample, they can also participate now with the online version of the survey. So, the online version is now on the city's website. You can see it on the homepage and will also be promoted in social media and industry. We just really would like to encourage everyone to participate. It's the opportunity for Tuolton residents to feedback and let us know how we're doing. The survey closed on September 5th, which is very great.
Great, well, thank you. Look forward to those results. Next on the agenda are citizen comments, anyone to address the council on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? And we'd like you to keep your comments to about three minutes. Typically, we'll get back to you with any questions you have in writing. And you don't have to be signed up, but I will take the signups first. And you're to have them here, I have Susan Noack. Welcome, Susan.
Mayor, Council?
Thank you for having me. My name is Susan Noack. Tonight, I am representing the Tuolton Assembly and House Committee. And I wanted to give you a quick update on what we've been doing for the last two and a half weeks. We heard about the possibility that the post office on 90th was going to be moved to Tete Town. And we, I had my notes, we heard about it on July 18th. And that there would be a meeting on July 26th, a public meeting. I rallied my task force together. We met and had a meeting deciding that we wanted to do something about this. So, the first thing we did was we went to the meeting. About half our committee was able to come on short notice. And then we met on August 2nd to decide what our game plan was going to be. And as you can see from my handout of what we submitted to Denver at their request, I'm sure you all know all about what's been going on, so I won't go into detail. But they told us that three to four hundred letters would be appropriate and significant. Well, we sent, as of today, my count is 339 letters that have gone out. That's as much as I can track. The rest of them I haven't, I can't track. There's still time, you have till Friday to get it in. But as you can see from the list I handed you, this was an extremely busy grassroots effort. And I was really proud to be a part of it and be a part of the community. We had neighborhood associations involved. We were on Nextdoor, we were in Tuolton Times, we were on Tuolton Life Web Site. We were at the Chamber. We went to, we had one of our members stood at the post office one morning and handed out letters to people that were going to get their boxes and didn't know about it. A friend of mine lived in Orchard Hills, and she went at seven o'clock in the morning and stood at the entrance and handed out letters to people leaving for work. So, we were everywhere. All of our members were out getting letters. Great way to meet the community. And it was really lots of fun. So, I mailed a packet on Friday. Denver should have gotten today, I asked for receipts, I could make sure that he got it. And I'm going to call him then on Wednesday. Had several chats with Greg Sheldon already. I'm going to call him on Wednesday to make sure he has everything. He did let me know a week or so ago that he already had a lot of letters mailed separately. He did say we could send one letters, petitions, and that we could send them all at once, so not individual envelopes. So, we'll see what happens. I'm not cynical enough to think that this isn't going to work. But I certainly hope we made an impact one way or the other. What we did in our, just so you know, what we did in all of our form letters and the letter that I wrote on behalf of the task force was letting them know that yes, we certainly understood their reasoning for having to move. It's a financial reason and they're trying to be responsible. But I let them know that we've had a post office in our downtown course since 1869. And if we move it to Tete Town, they won't be in our court anymore. And we just let them know what, how they would think the news had impacted our whole community, not just seniors. Everything we do for seniors or advocate for seniors advocates for the whole community. So, we were kind in our letter, in a letter, we were PC, which we were supposed to do. Hopefully, he'll read some and count them. And the next step is that we decide to, our deadline was July 20th, or August 26th. Everything and send it out to the next level. And they'll make the decision by September 26th. Thank you all for your support. The city was a big support group. The Chamber was a huge support in the business.
Well, thank you for that great work. I mean, it just shows how much energy the Aging Task Force folks have, right?
Yeah, we're pretty powerful.
Yeah, pretty powerful. One thing I would suggest you do is contact, I think you have the email addresses. If not, we can let you know you have them online. Bonamici's office and Wyden and Merkley, who are all been tipped off on this, obviously. But remind them of the deadline. And then tell them about your progress on your mail, on your letters that you've sent.
I mailed them on email, all three of them, they're staff members, over the weekend. Account was a little lower. So, I'm going to email them again and let them know how much we've gone out. When I emailed in my handout, I was, did not have the petition number, which is 57. So, that made a, the impact on the whole number. And I heard back from Jaggett?
Yeah, Jaggett, with Merkley's office. Look, I know Kelly from Suzanne's office was very intent on it, so. Anyway, just let them know what you've done and remind them of the deadline. Okay, thank you. Good work. Next, I have John Weber. Oh, it does say F1, sorry, okay, an F1, okay. Because that's the only citizen comment sheet that I had. You don't have to be signed up. Is there anyone you'd like to address the council on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, saying none, we'll move into the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered routine. Councils had a chance to ask questions during work session. But they'll be adopted by one motion collectively unless someone on the council would like an item removed and heard separately. The consent agenda tonight consists of item D1, consideration of the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 8. And D2 is consideration of recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. And D3 is consideration of Resolution Number 5294-16, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement to participate in the emergency management cooperative of Washington County. Anyone like an item pulled from consent? Saying none? Been moved to and seconded to adopt. Consent agenda is red discussion and motion in favor?
Aye.
Posed, it's unanimous, thank you very much. Special reports, the annual report of the Tuolton Arts Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dawn Epton, I'm vice chair of the Tuolton Art Advisory Committee.
And I'm Brett Hamilton, a member of the Tuolton Art.
Welcome to you, thanks for coming tonight.
Art in a community capacity is almost impossible to measure. But we know that community art fosters pride, civic engagement, and provides a sense of place within a city. We'd like to take a moment to recognize our members. Chair Buck Brayden. Myself, vice chair. Councilee Zan Frank Boobinick. Members Art Berry, Kristen Erickson, Mason Hall, and Brett Hamilton.
And Gary Thompson vacated his position on the committee. So, we currently have one opening. I think we're taking applicants. Also, a few months ago, our city staffer Kelsey Lewis took a new position in the city. So, since then, Paul Henon has been our staff person.
You're scraping the bottom of the barrel, wouldn't you say? Just at the limpie, yeah.
On the screen here is a painting from our Visual Chronicle. And this is where the new 124th Street Extension will be going. So, this illustrates perfectly the value of our Visual Chronicle. To document our changing city, to preserve in an artistic form images of what the community was once like.
So, what is the role of the Tuolton Art Advisory Committee? We support the arts in Tuolton and recognize the importance of art in the community. Ensure excellence in the city's public art collections. Our four primary art programs are Art Splash, Concerts in the Commons, Art Walk, and Visual Chronicle. Art Splash is a weekend art show and art sale on the Tuolton Commons. The 2015 show had 38 artists participating, and we collected over $6,700 in booth fees. We very much appreciate the 30 volunteers who make that happen. We estimated that 2,000 people attended the show. Concerts in the Commons take place Friday nights in July and August. 2015 saw an average attendance of 800 people per concert. It continues to be a great gathering of the community.
The Tuolton Visual Chronicle is a collection of visual art which provides a record of Tuolton's cultural and history. Started in 1995, the Chronicle is an archival record and a resource. Currently contains over 220 pieces which rotate throughout the city buildings. The Visual Chronicle has three collections, the general, historical, and student. The student collection is in its ninth year. And this year's acquisition on the right here is retitled "My Small World" by Morgan Darby. It's a great piece of photography and digital wizardry. It's currently on display in the team room at the library. And that small photo does not do it justice. It's high resolution photo montage, it's fantastic.
Yes, it is fabulous.
The team room.
Art Walk is a self-guided tour of Tuolton's public art. Paul and his team did an amazing job with the addition of the Ice Age Loop this year, which starts the library, goes past the Macedon, cuts through the Breezeway, and comes back to the New Tuolton River Greenway Trail with its interpretives. Improvements were funded by a grant of $36,000 from the Washington County Vision Association, plus cash contributions from Center Cow and local funds. The artwork brochure has been updated and will be available and distributed citywide on September 1st through the Chamber, Heritage Center, and local hotels.
The Tuolton Art Advisory Committee supports arts in the community. TAC partners with the Heritage, Tuolton Heritage Center to support art programs, including performances and exhibits. Each year, TAC makes direct contributions to a small number of local outside organizations that are making a positive impact on arts in our community, including the Willbrook Arts Camp and Masked American Theater.
We recognize art in Tuolton through the Living Room Theater, excuse me, the Living Room Gallery and the Community Enhancement Award. The Living Room Gallery in the Tuolton Public Library honors and celebrates culture and community by displaying the finest examples of works by local artists. Very grateful to Angela Ratz for her excellent work coordinating with the artists and hanging a new collection four times per year.
From time to time, when we see a significant contribution to arts in our community, TAC will publicly recognize the individual or organization by issuing our community arts enhancement commendation. This year, we recognized Masked American Theater for their production of singing in their.
We dedicate to maintaining Tuolton's public art collections at a high level of excellence. The bronze sculptures have been cleaned and waxed as a part of our public art maintenance program. We're exploring a percent-for-art option to finance future acquisitions.
Looking forward, we will continue to produce our art programs and events and maintain our strong support for the arts. Art Splash 2016 went well, and we will have more info on that in next year's annual report.
In the 2016-2017 fiscal year, we plan to complete the pathway in lighting of the Lazy River Sculpture, pursue opportunities to add gateway artwork at the main entrance to the city, and to incorporate public art plan in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. The TAC very much appreciates the council's continued support for the arts in Tuolton. And this concludes our annual report.
Well, you guys are busy. Lot going on. Thank you, any questions?
Any questions?
Well, again, just want to compliment you on the good work that you're doing. And I know you're an energetic group. And it shows with everything that we have to display, both indoors and outdoors, as art for the public. It all comes from the work that this committee does each and every year and has been doing. And I was pulling Paul's leg because I'm probably guessing you were probably staffed to the first Labor Arts Committee, I mean, Arts Committee, when it was, the Library Arts Committee, back 25 years ago. So, a full circle for Paul. And, but again, just appreciate all you've done for all these years. Keep up the good work. And now, we have a report from the Soil and Water Conservation District, or a presentation, I guess.
To give that presentation.
May John? Are you suffering from a sore back?
No, tractor ran over me.
Tractor ran over you?
Things don't work well.
The reason I ask is I'm recovering from a sore back, and I've been walking and wincing like you for about eight weeks. I'm, sorry.
I would like to share that with you, but a couple other places besides the back, so.
Yeah.
My excuse for that is if it's not pulled by a diesel tractor, I go in the house. My name is John McDonald, I'm the chairman of the board of the Tuolton Soil and Water Conservation District. Thank you all for allowing me to speak to you for a few minutes. It's, my presentation is going to focus on what we're doing with the levy that's going to be presented. But I wanted to call your attention to some of the items in the folder. We have the standard brochure, which is required, you know, distribution. Second item, we have a brag sheet called the annual report. And a big thing at the item, like speaks make a difference, and that's exactly what we feel we are doing. On the right side are three little publications. One is a sheet that what we call the one-page, or is kind of a end-out thing we can give to a lot of people. Second one is a special message to Washington County residents, which is the technical information. It has things about current budget. The third item is a very brief summary of 125-page annual, no, annual business plan. I figured this would be the better one to give to you, other than the long one, so that's why I brought it along. I want to speak to you about what we're doing in the levy. The most important thing is that we serve all residents of Washington County, even though historically we have been working in agriculture and rural areas primarily. That's because that's where our funding direction will be. About 75% up to 90% of our funding is restricted. Means we can only work in certain areas of the county. We can own certain projects on certain landowner properties and for certain purposes. Major funding being the Clean Water Services funding, along with the USDA funding that goes into the projects that we're putting along the streams in Washington County. And also, a little bit out in Dairy McKay Creek, Department of Agriculture. But that's all we can really do. That's one of the reasons we need the levy is to move to other areas, both the rural area as well as the forest area, where they've said, please come in and help us. Second perspective that I want to get across is that sometimes it's easy to talk about, well, what do we need to do today? What are you going to do at Forest, you know, tomorrow and stuff like that? But natural resource management, as all of you can, I'm sure, testify, is a long-term proposition. You have to start now to do the kinds of things you want to be through 20 years from now. You started planting the trees along those streams for Clean Water Service, Betis, 10 years ago. Expecting just to come into fruition, to provide the shade that's requested, in another 10 years. So, this is something you have to plan for and work at it. As you can see, we're primarily concerned with clean water. We're also concerned about the supply of water, helping people use less water, particularly in the agriculture area. Because we're going to need all we can get as population grows, as demand grows, and other pressures are upon us, including regulation. But we can't do everything we need to do. Partnerships, I think, is absolutely the essential game. Anybody who's getting anything done is working with people to get things done. We will provide a certain level of expertise and competency and background and experience and so forth. But wherever we go, we try to work with partners. We work with Clean Water Services, we work with Park of Rec, we work with Irrigation Districts, whatever it may be, and the same would be true when we're working with cities and so forth. Work where you think you'd like to have our resources applied, not where we think we ought to be. I think this statement says that, you know, we're all connected to something. I happen to believe that it's critically important what we do in the forest areas and rural areas for the simple fact that, you know, most water that comes to you goes through us first. And we're the most likely people, other than what comes off of your lawns, you know, what's going to come off of farms and so forth, to pollute those waters. Therefore, it's really important that we do everything we can in the rural areas and the timber areas, make sure that we've got the protections against leaching, and we're working with the landlords to make sure that we're applying whatever chemicals and fertilizers. The levy we're asking for is nine cents per 100,000 of assessed value. So, it's about $18 a year for a household with a home valued at $200,000. And of course, they hear, or I say here, that the full amount wouldn't be assessed. Because if we did, that would be absolutely stupid. Doesn't matter where we're trying to go, it takes ramp-up time, it takes building things, it takes building relationships. Finding programs and services and so forth where they go, where you can march it out. So, it's going to take us a while to get up and started. We did a poll this, earlier this spring, we found out something that we found quite pleasant. 60% of the people said, yes, we favor what you're talking about. We gave them the messages, good and bad messages. You know, what would you think about this, or what would you think about on our negative side of, oh, we just serve agriculture? You know, what do you need those people for? This covers every single demographic in the entire county, this professional stratified sample collection. And so, we're very happy and encouraged by the fact that other people recognize the importance of clean water and good soil. I'd love to give you all the details that we know about, you know, what are the benefits of good soil? What are the benefits of clean water, there's all kinds of things. Get down to, you know, good soil can be used for stormwater management properly. But we have a lot of things to be proud of. Now, we're, as you can see, kind of the hole in the donut. You know, people all around us have tax bases. Oldham County, if you had the two conservation districts there, we're talking about, you know, 15 million plus. And they're still working with, you know, Bureau of Environmental Services and so forth to do collaborative things throughout the county. For everybody, Columbia, Tullamook, Yamhill, Marion Pole, Benton, Oldham, McClachmas and so forth have tax bases. And frankly, I'm terribly jealous of what they're able to do. At least we had the resources to do the same things and even more. They're not even being asked to do timber services by Woodland Association, and including the State Department of Forestry, to be able to sit out and help our forest owners, where you help ag. It would allow us to do urban resident services. We can do the same thing we do in ag area. We can come into a landowner, we can come into a neighborhood association, we can come into some designation that we would select mutually, and through the conservation and technical assistance we do elsewhere, working with forests and farms, we've got to do more in both of those areas. The things that we strive for would be the icons at the top, clean water and healthy soil. They were not great jobs in health. I've been telling people, there's a whole lot of evidence about the health benefits, both physical and mental, for access to nature. We've learned an awful lot. People need to get out and see something green and growing once in a while, and it helps. And that's part of what we're interested in doing. You guys have wonderful parks. By the way, I need to congratulate whoever did your website where you have America's best community. The thing that I failed to do, and I should have gone back and done it again, I should have started from the very beginning and tried to count how many times you used the word best. Because I have a feeling you guys are proud of this place, and every reason to be so. It was a wonderful, wonderful piece. Anyway, what we provide is technical assistance for private lands of all parts in the country, in the county. A restoration and conservation, that's where we get down into the detailed scientific analysis, assessment of problems, consideration of options, writing out plans for implementation, et cetera. Outreach and education, we're not just talking about going out and putting up a sign that says, hi, isn't nature wonderful? We're talking about detailed quality education. I want, for example, personally, a thing called Ag in the Classroom to be in every single elementary school in the county. And I would be willing to go, if we got this levy, into what we would provide as local leverages, which would be small grants and so forth, and help fund that happen. I really think it's critically important, along with some of the other educational trust that we have with the science curriculums, math curriculums, things you've heard like STEMs and so forth. We have a number of endorsements, the only ones I have up here are illustrative, that's not a complete miss, and the ones we actually have the form signed and all ready to go. Today, I got Chairman Andy Dyke and Fran Malonowski. So, we're talking, and I'll talk to the other three, they're meeting tomorrow at 2:00. So, we've got farmers and foresters, we have major conservation groups and so forth. The one I'm really proud of happens to be sitting in the back of the room, named Brian. He represents the Tuolton River Deapers. And before, he's everywhere. Businesses, again, illustrative, technology groups, Wolf Water Resources and so forth. And even the other people have recognized the impact of, you know, natural areas, open areas and so forth on, on health, like the Oregon Public Health Institute, that, you know, what you guys are trying to do in Washington County is really important. Here is a website, you can go and get more information about it. endorse it, donate your money, volunteer to watch streets.
Thank you, John. Questions for John? I have a question, I don't know if it's for John or Jerry or Cheryl, but John and I have talked about this before. And you'd indicated some of the services that you would be able to provide the city of Tuolton, in urban services in terms of, and I'm not sure the detail of what those are. But, and I encouraged you to connect up with our operations department and talk about that. I don't know if that ever, if that happened, or?
I, I didn't. I don't know if anybody from our staff did or not.
Who's the director? The lady?
Lacy Townsend?
Lacy? So, maybe it was her.
You met with Jen?
Jennifer.
Jennifer?
Yeah, yeah.
Nelson Schnee, yes.
Yeah, so did they connect at all? Because they were, they were talking about the work that, with this levy passing, or this tax base, tax permanent rate, actually, passing. A number of activities that they could support our operations department or the city broadly. And I don't know the details of those, and I had asked to follow up with Cheryl and Jerry and talk about that. I don't know, apparently that hasn't happened.
If that did not happen, I apologize.
Apology, I was just thinking that that might be helpful for us, for our council, to get a.
Yeah, we were talking about everything from stormwater to rain gardens, to weed control, to urban farms, to urban forest plantings, those types of things.
And, and as I took it in the conversation, anyway, some of those services, if you were fully staffed up, after having a permanent rate like this, you would be doing in urban environments and. environments and working with the cities directly on some, some of this activity. But I'm not sure what that is and what that looks like. So maybe you might have...
I think it's important to note that some of the stuff we would want to do in rural, excuse me, in urban areas, cities, could also be done through grants. We don't want to staff up to do everything that needs to be done. I mean, we'd have a huge body of people up there. But if we can keep it small and we can use small grants, like we could come to the city here, or the public works, or whomever you would designate, and say, you know, what needs to be done? How can we help? Here are the resources we have, here are the expertise fields where we have, what can we do about, you know, whatever planties you might have, whether it be a setting up urban farms, maybe, maybe it's school farms, or we're working at some places. But we would be able to provide some of the seed money, or the match money, or the funding money, to even match it, as is happening in Monoma County, Soil and Water Conservation Districts are matching metro money, because they, they require a one-to-one match, you know, some things happen by other avenues. But we, we could use both our technical expertise, as well as our, our funding, come up with small grants, project grants and so forth, where you think, well, it could be the whole area. Natural resources is a mighty broad field.
Sure.
Water and vegetation. I would love to do some things, for example, in someplace in downtown Twolton, on pollinators. We've got a problem with pollinators, you know, and their effect on food is pretty dramatic when it comes to looking at 40% of the stuff in grocery stores.
You say pollinators, like bees?
Pollinators, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got to do a better job of both protecting the ones we've got, as well as, you know, probably getting more.
The reason I asked...
We just have to...
The reason I asked the question is because there's clearly a benefit by having restoration and, you know, repairian work, et cetera, et cetera. Throughout the county, there's a benefit to urban dwellers to be able to visit and participate and be on site in some of those areas. But when I met with, I thought, it must have been, was it Jennifer?
Jennifer, Jennifer Nelson-Schnee.
They, she was bringing out specific benefits to the urban areas themselves, not just the ancillary benefits to urban dwellers by being able to have access to some of the other areas that you're currently working in and you want to work hard on. Yeah, Brian?
Can I make comment on that?
Sure, Brian.
The Soil and Water Conservation District, as John said, there's lots of partnerships. One of the programs that they've run the last year is the Weed Watchers Program, where they took this training to various different cities. I think they had like eight different trainings, Beaverton, Tiger, I'm not sure if there was one here, but there could have been, where to help people recognize the most emerg, most threatening weeds that are emerging in the state of Oregon and the Twolton Valley. And so it's with the support of the Oregon Department of Agriculture, so they can eradicate these weeds before they become a big, serious problem. The other thing that, in the past, the Twolton Basin Public Awareness Committee, which the city of Twolton, the cities and Clean Water Services work together on, has done naturescaping classes that were, that were run by West Monoma, West Monoma or East, one of the Monoma Soil and Water Conservation Districts. They're no longer doing work outside their district, so we can't hire them to do that. So that, that requires that our Soil and Water Conservation District come up with a program to replace, replace that. The other things that, that have been under consideration is the backyard habitat certification that's happening in Lake Oswego. I know Clean Water Services has spoke with them, they, we'd like to work with, find a program that, that fits more our needs in, in our basin, and not just adopt their program, what they have there. Those are just some of the examples. When Clackamas County passed their, their levy a few years ago, they, it was a big boost to farmers' markets, was another thing. But the kind of classes that Twolton offers on arbor reek, you know, the pruning classes and getting people to understand how they interact with nature in their own yards, are the kind of things that we see would be very much happening with this passage of the levy.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Not to mention food.
Not to mention what?
Not to mention food.
Right, exactly.
Farmers' markets, exactly.
Yeah. Any questions? Well, well, thank you for that.
Thank you for your generous amount of time.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk offline, but I'd be happy to endorse what you're doing. I think it's valuable and worth the time.
By the way, I do have a wonderful chiropractor.
Worth the nine cents. Sorry?
I have a wonderful chiropractor.
Yeah. So, yeah, very good, thanks. All right. That takes us to... General Business, item F1 is consideration of a request from the 12th Chamber of Commerce to adopt a resolution opposing the passage of Initiative Petition 28, what we might now call Measure 97. We had asked previously if there was anyone that wanted to speak in support of this as well?
There was that conversation at the last council meeting.
So there's no one, I don't have anyone signed, there's no one here to speak in support of the measure that you know of?
Not as far as I know.
Okay.
Oh.
Oh, you do?
We're in opposition to the resolution.
So you're in support of...
Word of Measure 97.
Okay, all right, good. Both of you?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have you signed up? You don't need to be, but...
Yes, that is the slip that you...
I forgot. I thought I had kept all those out separately.
This is him.
No, John just spoke.
You're John, correct? This is him.
Oh. Okay.
That was John McDonald.
Gotcha, gotcha. Too many Johns, all right, sorry about that. Let's see, this is not a debate, this is not a point-counterpoint, but we do want to hear both sides of, of the proposal. And I'm thinking six minutes, is that, does that work? That's like two, three-minute peoples? You can be both of them?
I get to be a couple of people.
Okay. Is that fit with you, with council?
But it can be done within the six...
Okay. So you'll keep track, six minutes, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ogden, councilors. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak about this this evening. I think many of you know our chamber work over the last many years. We're a 35-year-old organization. It's truly about jobs, and we have even adopted a motto that we like to create a business-friendly environment so that businesses can create jobs. And we've seen real job growth in the region, and we've seen wage growth for the first time in many years. We have the lowest unemployment in over 16 years, and people are fighting for employees. And as a result of that, we're finally starting to see wages go up, and that's good for families. We also have the largest, well, I guess it's second-largest industrial zones in the entire region, and the opportunity for economic growth is significant right here in the region. The chamber, we only represent 420 businesses locally, but that's 14,000 employees, and that's a huge opportunity. And then we also know that we currently have almost 27,000 jobs right here. Well, having gone through the recession in this job, and to see the number of businesses that closed, to see all of the folks that lost their jobs, and to also even see my own husband downsized, I'm telling you, when you have a job, you have everything. And I think most of you also know that I've worked many, many years with the program. And that's where my, my whole passion changed in terms of how I look at prosperity and the economic opportunity that we're offering. And Measure 97 hurts our economic opportunity. It is a tax on gross sales, it is a tax on tax, and I've handed you a couple of handouts, and I'm sure you've seen plenty of, of different examples about the pros and the cons of this measure. But when it gets right down to our most vulnerable, we'll hurt the most status. Corporations do not pay taxes. Stockholders pay taxes, and consumers pay taxes. It's passed on. And yet, if you take a look at this tax on gross sales, every small company, by a small large company, and I don't care if you go to a brand-new little coffee shop that is so fabulous, she buys you the paper products from Sisca, or bakery products from another large corporation, that tax is going to be passed on to us as a consumer. And so who, who does this affect? It affects our average family. The average Oregon family, according to the Legislative Revenue Office, will pay an extra $613 a year. Most vulnerable, most, I guess, most families that are, are under that $48,000 a year, that's going to be hard for us to come up with another $613 a year. How are they going to come up with that money? The second thing is, is that we've seen that that same Legislative Revenue Office, it is an independent organization within the Capitol, both Republicans and Democrats, have created this group, says that we could lose up to 38,000 jobs. And yet, I look at it as not only are the jobs lost, but it's our future to build those opportunities within our beautiful Bassell Creek in the southwest concept land. It's that ability to attract new companies to Oregon that will say, we're a great place to develop, we have a wonderfully educated workforce, we have beautiful parks, we have lovely cities and schools, I mean, those are the things that attract new companies. But bottom line, if your product and cost of producing your product is more expensive somewhere else, they're going to go there. We're an international, global economy. And I've had companies in Twolton, very, very large companies, that have said, this is the kind of thing that causes their corporation to look at Twolton, and not just Twolton, the entire west coast is no longer being economically solvent to make product and services. It's like, this is the kind of thing that causes their corporation to say, it's now time to go to Asia. It's now time to take a new location and move everybody. They don't want to move, they love Twolton. But this is the situation when they're competing on a global basis for jobs and products and sales, they have to make those decisions. So I'm here from, you know, a lot of different hats, but I, I really want you to think about, this is a tax on a tax on a tax. And there's a simple little distribution channel, but a bottle of beer, a brewer Eugene Oreni, sells to a distribution company, and that distribution company then sells to another, and then goes through Redmont. By the time it gets through the, to the distribution chain, you've got anywhere from 2.5% to 7% to 10% tax on that bottle of beer. And I think that that's the reality that we're not thinking about. My final thing, just in terms of the analysis, it has said that it's a $6 billion tax that has been earmarked for certain things, healthcare, education, et cetera. And that sounds great, except on a ballot measure, you cannot earmark it. It goes to a general fund. So $6 billion collected over a two-year by any one, goes to a general fund, and the legislators that are there currently might say, yes, that's where we're going to put this money. But in two years, they're replaced. They get replaced, they go out, you know, for reelection. There's no control over that reallocation of those funds. The next group will say, well, you know, we want infrastructure, we want, you know, great new roads and et cetera, and they can move the funding. So I'm here to tell you that represent our businesses, I'm also a part of the Oregon State Chamber of Commerce, I sit on the Board of Directors, we have 47 chambers that have signed on to the whole working and said, this is not the way to solve Oregon's issues. We have major tax issues, we need to reform, the business community needs to sit down, and we're willing to sit down, and we want to sit down. Just don't use this method. It is actually a business. We're asking you to reconsider a different method at first, this poorly constructed method.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Appreciate it. I think the clock got stuck.
Did it?
You kept thinking that, you only have five minutes, it goes on forever.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good. Thank you for, thank you for that.
I will just ask you to...
Did you have, did you distribute that?
I did give it to Noel for Nicole's meeting. And unfortunately, it is from Sunset Manufacturing Company, from Jim Warren owner, Lindney's owner, and...
Here in Twolton.
And it's very well written, and so hopefully we'll also get a chance to look at that.
We just have one copy?
I can give you mine instead of mine.
Okay. All right, thank you, Linda.
But thank you for using mine.
You bet. Now we have John Weber. And then, you can have six minutes, plus a little of the clock if you want. Or, were both of you going to speak?
No, just me.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors.
Thank you for being here.
Yep, my name is John Weber. I'm a teacher at Tigerhead High School. I'm also the president of the Tigerhead-Twolton Education Association. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the Resolution 5297-16, and to speak in favor of Measure 97. Measure 97 will help support schools, healthcare, and services for senior citizens. Currently, our schools are underfunded, our healthcare is not affordable, and more and more seniors are retiring into poverty. Measure 97 will require the largest corporations doing business in Oregon to pay their fair share. The vast majority of the 400,000 active businesses in Oregon will be unaffected by Measure 97. Less than 1% or just one quarter of 1% of companies doing business in the state will see their taxes go up. As a teacher in the Tigerhead-Twolton School District the past 15 years, I've seen firsthand the implications of underfunded schools. Oregon has the fourth lowest high school graduation rate in the nation, we have the third-largest class sizes in the nation, and one of the shortest school years. We can do better, we must do better for our students. I know that not everybody in this room supports Measure 97. I know that not everybody in Twolton supports Measure 97. But Measure 97 currently is polling at 60% pass, and over 280 small businesses have already endorsed the measure. I believe the voters in this city deserve the right to educate themselves about Measure 97. If they do that, they'll learn that corporate taxes do not drive consumer prices, and that there is a plan to spend the additional revenue from Measure 97 on education, healthcare, and senior services. I do not believe that the citizens of Twolton voted for their city council so that those city council members could then tell them how to vote on issues. Let the citizens do their part as, their job as part of democracy, please, and do not pass this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for John? Just forget, more time on the clock? Okay, thanks, appreciate it. Does anyone else have any comments on this? Okay, thank you. So now council's turn to discuss what to do next with the resolution. Who wants to start?
I personally don't feel that we should take a position in this. I think each individual, each individual counselor or the mayor could always endorse either side, but I do believe we're going to get in some iffy quagmires when we start getting on statewide ballot initiatives, when we take positions and pass resolutions. I have no problem doing it for bond measures that are local, like schools, and for road taxes and stuff like that that has direct impact on our community. Yes, I know our businesses are in here, and they could be impacted, but as John mentioned, I don't think it's our role to ask people to vote a certain way on a statewide initiative, just maybe on local bond measures and civic, public works kind of projects, nothing like this. I'd rather let the voters educate themselves, and like I said, if a counselor or a mayor would like to endorse this measure or be against the measure, feel free to do that, sign up on either website, and get active and help get the word out of how you feel.
Any others?
I join Frank in opposition to the council making a statement of how our citizens in Twolton should be voting on any type of a statewide initiative like this. I cannot recall us considering something similar when Measure 66 and 67 passed. I cannot recall a time when we had a prior sales tax on that, that the council made such a statement that the citizens of Twolton should vote in a particular fashion. I think that it is the responsibility of the chamber to advocate for the positions that they support. It is the responsibility of the School Employees Association to do the same on behalf of their membership as well, and that is the appropriate thing for them to do, especially considering, you know, the relative impacts to those groups. However, I do not believe that it is the, the place for this council to be making that pronouncement for our citizens. I don't, we are here to make decisions that affect, that relate to the running of, of the city of Twolton. That's what we're here for. I don't think that we should be doing this. I think that we, we do this, and we open the door to every election cycle... we do this, and we open the door to every election cycle. We're going to have every contentious argument sitting at this table in front of us and demanding that we make a yes or no vote on everything that is difficult. And I really do not think that that's where we want to go.
Anyone else? Question?
I believe it's more of a statement. I just believe that this is outside the purview of what we should be working on. And I don't believe as much aware in the of our individual individuals might lie. I'm not sure that this is the perfect process of counsel to take a stand on. We represent the entire city. And all of our citizens are against any particular measure. And, you know, without being able to represent a hundred percent as other ones, and put on something that is appropriate and that I can press to represent any one particular side, you know, just community outside of that group, we should be taking a position on this. I mean, individually, as voters, we're individually, as Americans, we're getting involved in the process, you know, with the power to.
Ed, we had that?
Well, the fact that I think that Measure 97 is a poorly crafted solution to a very real problem and that I oppose it is probably not any longer the issue because I'm also a realist and can count to three.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's numbers left to talk about.
And, excuse me, so that train has kind of left the station. And I respect the comments that we've just heard. And it's obvious that this, even though I oppose Measure 97, doesn't matter. This is not going to pass. And I think we just, as far as this is concerned, call it a night.
Yeah, there's not a motion on the floor, so there's not even something to discuss on the motion. But I guess I would just simply say, I don't disagree with anything that you guys have said about, this is not directly a City of Tuolton issue, like a library bond or a, even a gas tax where we would actually get direct money from the state. So, it's outside the purview. However, I got to tell you, in this case, it's so extreme that it absolutely will have more to do to the financial benefit of this community than anything that's ever been voted on. When you talk about changing the revenue of the state by one-third, which is what this is, you are taking the current state budget, if I understand the numbers right, and you're extracting from the, from the community, another one-third of that on top. That's no small thing. That's the largest tax increase ever imagined. And where the few states that do have a transfer tax, I understand it's like one-tenth or in some cases, one-one-hundredth of what this amount is. So, it's clearly a job killer. It clearly has impact not only on the people who live here from employment, but has an impact on the potential future AV for Tuolton, which directly affects our revenue. My feeling is that this will have a larger negative impact on Tuolton tax revenue over the long term than any positive vote on a library measure or, say, a gas tax or anything else where it's relatively small numbers. Because when you have a small number of large businesses leave, they're not going to leave tomorrow, but they certainly will be figuring their future plans. I can tell you, the largest employer in this town made the decision to stay here when they were looking at, not stay here, but to grow here, when they were looking at an alternative of going to Malaysia. And certainly, the cost of doing business here was the main factor that kept them here. And they've grown four times since then, quadrupled their size since then. And these are the kinds of things, literally, that will not only, not allow that to happen, but will cause businesses to contract and go other places. We spend a ton of energy, we're trying to spend a ton of energy, at places like Greater Portland Inc. We're trying to market the Portland region to the rest of the country, to some extent to the world. And there, that is the only marketing effort that this region has, coordinated marketing effort. And it's my opinion that if this passes, there will be no reason for them to continue to be in business. And they feel the same way. There's nothing to go out and sell. So, if you're trying to market to the rest of the country, the environment for doing business, and we're talking about Tuolton still being the largest, I believe, the largest single area for industrial growth in the region, not just Basalt Creek, but in terms of, we got, I forget the number, 400 acres or something in the industrial area, more than that, that's still developable. It's already inside our city limits. And not to mention the UGB expansion to the south. So, I think if this passes, it will substantially put a negative impact on that growth. And I think that is then pertinent to this community, something that really puts fallow, that growth opportunity, I think is very pertinent to this community. So, it's not a matter of telling people how they should vote, in my opinion. It's a matter of this council recognizing the negative impact that this will a likelihood have. And, you know, just to repeat what you guys already know, the calculations are done by the Legislative Revenue Office. This is not a partisan thing. Those are the state's numbers. And so, I think I'm just concerned about that. The other number I saw is that you likely project a loss of 38,000 private jobs while at the same time create and fund 26,000 public jobs. So, how in the world do you keep taking engines off the train and throwing them on the back of the train and have them go in reverse and expect what engine's left to pull the whole train? You know, you just can't do that. So, you know, so that's why I think it's really important that this council pass this. Anything that we can do to continue the economic prosperity that we've felt here in Tuolton. I just remind you one last little factoid. You guys all know this, but in 2008 was when the recession hit, and, you know, for what, three or four years, there were many communities that were laying off staff, probably not police, maybe, I don't know, but laying off staff and doing cutbacks. Every year, we had net growth. Every year of the recession, we've had net growth in assessed value. And that's due to only one thing, businesses coming into town, not new residents. They were all, 100% of that growth is businesses coming into town. Now, whatever we do to try to blunt that or allow it to be blunted is going to hurt us in the long run. So, that's why I feel so important about it. But if that doesn't persuade anyone, then it's not going to pass. But I would move the resolution and ask if there's a second?
Second.
Move to second to pass the resolution to discussion on the resolution? Okay, all in favor? Say aye. And those opposed? No?
No.
So, it fails on a three to two vote. Thank you. That takes us to... Come on back. Consider resolution 5296-16, supporting the Clackamas County ballot measure requesting voter approval for a countywide motor vehicle fuel tax. And so...
We don't have, staff doesn't have a presentation on...
Right. There was, just some background. The last time that we met, we talked about the fact, and actually, Council Truax brought this up initially. The IGA that the county had put forward for cities to consider was one that would allow, if the, if the gas tax passed, would allow those cities who had passed a resolution in support of it to participate in the revenue, and those that had not passed the resolution in support of it in time for it to be noted in the voter's pamphlet, not to be able to share any of the revenue. And quite frankly, I think a number of us, first Ed, certainly myself, and then has spoke to other mayors across the county, pretty universal feeling that that isn't always the best way to build partnerships and intergovernmental support is by saying, you know, if you don't pass this resolution by this deadline, and the measure does pass, you don't get any of the money, which we found out they can actually legally do that. But that doesn't build goodwill and strong partnerships and advocacy. And a number of the mayors had conversations, and we all agreed that, most of us agreed, that urging folks to vote for this was in the county's best interest and our best interest because of what money that would come to us through Clackamas County. And the right way to do that is through our intergovernmental connection through Clackamas County Coordinating Committee and whatever other venues that the elected officials get together. But to put in an IGA that if you don't play, you don't get paid, is a big strike. So, after some consideration, they have rewritten that IGA?
There's no IGA.
There is no IGA. So, it's just going to be across the board. And actually, I wanted an IGA because the IGA specified that the county would, in fact, distribute the money less than the expenses. So, at this moment, there's no IGA at all? And there's not going to be one probably then?
Correct. I'm correct. That's my understanding.
Okay.
The, it's in the board of, the order of the board that shows that it's a 40-60 split.
And we had the clarification too, in that letter from Chairman L. and that he sent, spelled out the change. Not needing to pay the player.
Yes, but it's also in the ballot title. It's spelled out in the ballot title, the split. So, making an IGA unnecessary because it's in the actual ballot title language. But they have sent successive documents outlining the changes, but...
It's spelled out the changes in the distribution.
Yeah, but ultimately, there's no IGA. And they, it's not necessary because it's in the ballot.
Okay, all right. So, I would urge the council to support this resolution. We don't have a motion on the floor. If there's any preliminary conversation you need to have or would someone be willing to offer a motion?
Well, what I would offer initially is to reiterate a little bit of what you started out talking about, which is that government through coercion and intimidation and threats is not my idea of how our local government ought to run. And I was horribly offended by the first demand we got to pass a resolution like this, regardless of what I thought about the gas tax. And for those of you who think that a ballot title is going to protect us and it's going to get us our share of this money, I would refer you back to what our share of the library levy in Clackamas County is and how we got hosed out of that. I have no faith that we will see our fair share of this money or any of the money. But there's no doubt that the roads in Clackamas County, and I live in Clackamas County, are in need of significant repairs. And so, I'm not opposed to the gas tax. I'm opposed to the way that this has been handled. So, if you want to go ahead and pass, you know, and pass this, then I'm not going to stand in your way.
Do I take that as a motion?
Sure. I move we adopt the resolution.
Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded to adopt, Resolution 5296-16. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. And that takes us to Resolution 5293, authorizing city manager plifer and to accept regional flexible fund allocation, grant funds to complete project design for the Herman Road Active Transportation Project.
Yes, so we have our city engineer, Jeff Fox, and Zoe Monahan, two going to tag team. And you will just want to point out that there's actually two requests here. So, when we get to the end of the, what you think is the first part of the presentation, hold on because there's a second part.
Okay. Don't jump the gun.
Great. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Since we are here to ask to support this investment application and for regional flexible fund allocation, our regional flexible fund allocation grant, Metro, for our project development of the Herman Road Active Transportation Project, which is a little bit of a woman. But before we do that, this is just a breakdown of the grant fund. So, there are two components to the RSFA funding, one being the existing region-wide programs. So, those are things like the TOD or Transit Oriented Development, and the Transportation Systems Management and Operation Plan, or TSMO, and tribal, or regional tribal option, you know, if you're familiar with. The other section is the Community Investment Fund projects. And within that, there are two elements, the Active Transportation and Complete Streets, as well as regional programs. And this year, we are planning to submit an application for project development of an Active Transportation project. They allow us to give project development and/or construction of these funds.
So, the project that we are proposing or that we're requesting RFFA funding for is on Herman Road. So, I think most of you are familiar with it. It shows up in the upper side of the screen. This is a close-up of that oriented slightly, so it fits on the screen better. You can see it runs from 124th to Tuolton Road. So, that's the eastern section of that. It's a solid blue line. It's a section right now that has no shoulders and two there, offered lanes, tends to be drop-offs on one side, road tracks on the other. The upper right-hand corner is a picture of a cyclist being passed by a car, reasonably safe. That was me. And then, the dash blue line is another section that currently has bike lanes. If you look there to buffer bike lanes, we'll have a photo of those later in our presentation. So, our project proposal is for design development. So, essentially, public outreach, significant public outreach, proposing on garden corners, project design, environmental piece, going through the entire, the alternatives analysis to try and figure out what is the best solution to work with the natural community on that section of the road. So, this is just a photo of buffered bike lanes from one of the national organizations that shows what this looks like. So, our project proposal that we're requesting grant funding includes sidewalks, buffered bike lanes, pedestrian facilities, upgraded lighting, and other improvements to improve safety along this section of the roadway. And for the preliminary engineering phase, design development, we're requesting a grant for $571,000, $100,000 of local match, of which $70,000 would come from the county's MSTIT Opportunities Fund request. And so, last week, WCCC approved that on their list of six projects that are coming out of the county's overall pool of money. Future phases of the project, you can see we're showing those as well, include right-of-way and construction, largely. So, there's just significantly more. I put an asterisk on this because we used that Metro's cost estimating tool that came with the grant application. I think we're a little bit on the high side overall, fairly conservative. I suppose it's better to be a conservative now and less conservative. And Zoe and I have been out a bunch, talking to folks, and we have a huge amount of support, locally and regionally. So, it's been really fun and pretty interesting to see how many people are aware of this section of roadway, travel on it on a regular basis, know how dangerous it is, and support trying to do something to fix it. This is not a complete list. So, this is a list of current letters we have in hand. Several others on the way, including our commercial CIO.
So, assuming that we were with our application, it'll be due on Friday, and we'll bring that in. And then, throughout the summer, there will be a technical evaluation, Metro staff, and the transportation policy, which we will recommend projects for funding. There will be scoring, and then there will be a public comment period. Then, in fall through winter, JCPenney and the Metro Council will recommend adopting the project list. And those projects that are awarded funding will be collectively available as of 2019. And this is the article based on October 2019, which one's one. So, this evening, we're requesting, excuse me, that you adopt resolutions, attitude and reasons to authorize and assign our grant application for project development of Herman Road Active Transportation Project. And if you don't have any burning questions right now... And if you don't have any burning questions right now, we'll go a little bit further. Washington County is also submitting a regional flexible fund allocation grant request for Passau Creek Parkway, like to ask for $3 million for the right-of-way acquisition. So they've requested a letter of support from the city for that application, and that right-of-way would be on each of Passau Creek Parkway between the brands here, right, and he needs very good.
Do you need council action to authorize that letter?
It'd be best, yes.
Okay, that's...
Could you go back to the previous slide, please?
The one with the map?
Yeah. So this is specifically for the bridge project?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what did you ask?
It's specifically for the bridge project.
Okay.
The bridge over Passau Creek Canyon. The one I complain about constantly, you know the one.
It's to purchase right-of-way, the one for the bridge, yes.
Where do you think we're going to get other $4 million to do Herman Road?
Yeah, can you, can you go right back to the...
So, so we made a tactical decision as we were putting together this grant application. Zoe said we can apply for design development, construction, or both. So this funding source comes out every two years?
Three, three years.
Three-year cycle. So our thought was that we were applying now to the design development phase, we can have a lot of public involvement, put together a really solid cost estimate, not using just the cost estimating tool, using the engineering best judgment, and then go back for the next round of RFFA funding and apply for construction funding.
To the $4 million amount?
My guess is it will be less, but...
So the RFFA pot, how big is the pot?
So for Active Transportation, this year it is 25.81 million.
So the, the construction, the 4.971 million is for the road itself, from Teton to Tuolton Road, correct? And the, and the bike lanes?
Correct. Plus purchasing some...
Plus bike lanes from Teton West down to 124th or wherever it goes. So the, the road improvement itself, Teton to Tuolton Road, would that be part of the RFFA ask as well? Is that in this number?
Correct.
Okay. Do we know how much of it is road, how much of it is bike?
I don't, off the top of my head, I think it's...
All right. Are there any other sources for the road portion, other than RFFA?
Apparently, we're assuming RFFA, and we'll be seeking other sources as we...
Uh-huh. The only reason I ask is that, how likely are we to get four and a half million out of a 25 million regional pot? It's a question in my mind. And if we could, and how interested are they in, in funding, and I know I'm talking next cycle, how interested are they in funding road projects out of the flexible fund money, usually goes to, generally goes to non-road projects, or largely anyway, I think? So that what I'm getting at, if you were able to call out the road piece separately and fund that separately from another source, I don't know what the other source is, you know, it's not going to be our gas tax, we don't have that amount of money, I don't know where else that would come from. Uh, yeah.
Connect Oregon has some great stuff for, in their Fix-It dollars, and Bike Ped, I think that could go toward this in the next, in the next...
I'm talking about the roadway though, not the bike ped, they took it to auto roadway.
Right, well, Fix-It fixes the roadway problems as well, there's a specific pot for that.
Anyway, it would, it would be worthwhile, I think, at least, to hedge your bet and look at, I mean, if you get off of RFFA, I don't argue, but you might think about separating out the bike and bed component from the roadway component, at least for shopping purposes, and, and find out if there's anything through, you know, as you say, Connect Oregon, or, or if anything might pass in next legislative session, or happen chance, happenstance. Anyway, just thinking about that. So the $571,000 that Washington County is going to be asking for on our behalf, right?
$571,000 you're asking for, of the $100,000 local match, Washington County essentially agreed to...
So that's who came out of the coordinating committee, was $100,000?
No, 70, and...
Okay, okay.
From the city.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, good. So what do you need from us? Top of the resolution? And...
Slow move, second.
Move the second to the top of the resolution, 5293-16. Discussion on the motion? All in favor?
I have just a comment.
Sure.
I, I received an email on this topic that just was incredibly disappointing from a, a former resident of Tuolton, who seems to believe that keeping a stretch of road like this that is in disrepair is unsafe for all types of traffic, be it, you know, truck, car, bike, ped, you, you name it, is, that somehow leaving it the way that it is, is a better solution and will somehow reduce truck traffic in this area, and that if, if we, if we go through with this, it will somehow, you know, increase the likelihood of, of truck traffic to unmanageable levels and, and, and lead us into future transportation projects in this area that, that will make, you know, future truck traffic even, even more insane, according to this person. And it was just, it's very disappointing to me when we have people who live in the neighborhoods surrounding this area, and a lot of kids actually who live near this area, and there's, there is no shoulders on this section of road, it's, it's just incredibly, it's, it's been a great concern to me for a long time, and we've talked about it when we did the TSP, I'm very much in favor of getting this done sooner than later, if we can find a way to do it, but it's not a wise thing to just let stuff go. And I cannot imagine anybody who would advocate that that's the way to solve the problem.
Okay, discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Do you need a motion for the support letter on the RFFA request for Passau Creek Parkway?
I'm sure we don't have to, it would just be good to get direction, Sean's like, yeah, we have...
If you, if you're acting as a council, it, it would come as, as a motion and a vote.
Okay, you don't need a resolution, just a vote, huh? So the motion would be to, to issue a letter in support of the request, RFFA money for Passau Creek Parkway of $3 million? That'd be the motion.
Slow move.
And seconded?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so it passes. One, two, three, four to one. That takes us to Resolution Number 5295-16, supporting the endorsement, cities of Tigard and Tuolton to be designated as a demonstration community by the Blue Zones Project. All I can tell you is that we've been busy. I was going to share with you a document, uh, holy cow, of those who have already signed their endorsement to join the proposal. What I've been telling people, and I probably said this last time I was here, but just to make myself clear, I've been telling people that this is not a proposal by the city of Tuolton to the Oregon Business Council, nor is it a proposal by the city of Tigard to the Oregon Business Council, but it's a proposal by the community, and everyone who signs an endorsement letter is joining by signature this proposal. And probably, yeah, probably won't waste your time, um, trying to hook this up to the screen, but we have, we have well over 30, maybe 40 entities that have already signed endorsement letters. The Tigard City Council passed the resolution Tuesday night, we have all of our health, well, we have Providence Legacy, we have Marquee, we have the National Path University, we have the Age Wise Institute at PCC, we have the St. Vincent's Medical Center, only because Providence has signed on for some level of funding, as has Legacy, for the local matches required. We have, Fred Myers has signed on, Cabela's, we've got Rolling Hills, Horizon, St. Anthony's Church and School, our state representatives have all signed on, all four of them, and then organizations that do business here in Tuolton, like Community Action Organization, Tiger Tuolton Family Resource Center, Virginia Garcia, Health Clinics, the list goes on and on and on. So I've yet had anyone that we've spoken to not sign an endorsement letter, participate. So I think that's very encouraging. We're pretty much out of time, it has to be turned in Friday, so there are a few more people I would be talking to the rest of this week, but we've got a pretty large cadre of folks on both sides of the river. Oh, we also have Tuolton Together, I'm meeting with tomorrow, but I anticipate their endorsement, and Tiger Turns the Tide, I'm meeting with him on Thursday. So pretty much every organization on this side of the river, there's a sister organization across the river, companies like Lamb and Fout, Pacific Foods, Gerber, West Side Economic Alliance, both chambers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, TVFNR, of course, the school district. So I'd like to make sure that Tuolton is on that list?
Move we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Move the second to adopt the resolution, discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous, thank you very much. And that takes us to... Communication from councils. Well, Ed, Frank, Nancy? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Move the second to adjourn, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous, thank you very much, good night.